Good evening, ladies and gentlemen.
Wait, wait, wait.
Welcome to the December 2nd.
Wait.
It was seven by nine o'clock. Candy needs some rest. But she's doing a great job. Doing the job of all five people here. Okay, so before I do call this meeting to order, I just want to mention that tonight's special meeting, other than an opportunity for the public to comment on things that aren't on the agenda, is for one item only, and it's the comprehensive zoning regulation rewrite that we've been working on for two years. And we have our consultant on board who's going to do a presentation, and then there'll be time for public comment. But it is just a one item on the agenda meeting. So if you're here thinking you're going to hear about something else, you're in the wrong meeting. So let the record reflect that I call the meeting to order at 7:01. And we're appointing an alternate tonight, Lindsay Furt Fairchild. Thank both our alternates for being here. Again, once again, welcome. First meeting was our last session, and we're glad to have the board filled up once again. What's the commission's pleasure on minutes number 1808?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for meeting number 1808 from November 18, 2025, as submitted.
Motion by Ryan to approve, seconded by Dave. Thank you both. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm saying it was not at that.
Okay, one abstention, and the chair of state's motion passes. Next item on the agenda is public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board on an item not on the agenda. Again, not on the agenda. Hearing none. Candy, any correspondence?
Not for tonight, sir.
Not for tonight? Any reports from the staff?
Not for tonight, sir.
Okay. And I have nothing for the commission. Anyone with anything for the good of the order here?
Nope.
Hearing none. Zoning enforcement violations. Candy, nothing special to report there?
Not tonight, that's for the 16th meeting.
Okay. Nothing for administrative review or all business, and we move to public hearing. Ryan, in the absence of the secretary, would you mind just reading the brief annotation here on the agenda?
PZ 2551 RA, Town of Stonetown, care of F. Goams, IMEG. Zoning text amendment application for adoption of Phase Two amendments for the comprehensive zoning regulations rewrite.
Thank you. Before I do turn it over to Francesco, many members of this board and the staff, both past and present, in addition to our esteemed consultant, have worked very hard on this for the last two years. We've been assisted greatly by members of the public, some of our brethren commissioners and other commissions, and other public agencies that have helped us as well. And to all who have stuck with it and those who have just been in and out, I want to extend my thanks because I think it's made it a better document. And, you know, our meeting tonight is to air it in public hearing and hear from you once again. And we're all ears as we go into this final phase of adoption. So with that statement in mind, Francesco's presentation is lengthy, but when you think of the fact that it consolidates two years' worth of work into 40 minutes, it's pretty efficient. So I ask for your patience as we go through it because we do, from the lawyer's perspective, have to create a record upon which to base a decision. So this presentation is the minimum that we could conduct as a basis. So Francesco, with that in mind?
Could you open the public hearing?
That's, sorry.
No worries.
Motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open the public hearing for PZ 2551 RA, Town of Stonetown, care of F. Goams, IMEG.
Motion by Ryan to open the public hearing for adoption.
Seconded.
Seconded by Dave. Thank you both. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, public hearing is open.
One moment, just a point on housekeeping. If you could read the notice in the papers, please.
We do have to read the legal notice?
You sure do.
Okay. Do we have it here someplace?
Yes. It's on the top of your pile.
Okay. Pursuant to the general statutes of the State of Connecticut revision 1958 and all amendments thereto, and pursuant to the zoning regulations for the Town of Stonetown, Connecticut, the Planning and Zoning Commission hereby gives notice of this public hearing, which has been published twice in newspapers, having a substantial circulation within the Town of Stonetown. The first publication date was Friday, November 21st, 2025, being not more than 15 or less than 10 days prior to the hearing. The second publication date was Friday, November 28th, 2025, being not less than two weeks, pardon me, two days before the hearing. The newspapers in which these notices were published were The Sun and then New London Today.
Okay. Anything else prior to turning it over to Francesco? Okay. Francesco, you have the floor.
All right, very good. Can everyone hear me all right?
A little fuzzy. I like to break it up a bit.
Okay, I'll be sure to speak out. And can everyone see the presentation all right? Can they see my screen okay?
Just raise hands in the audience if you can see it okay, if you hear it okay.
It's still echoing.
Okay, it looks echoed, good.
Can you, can you?
Echoing.
Okay, very good.
Can you enlarge it?
Thank you, Chuck, for the introduction. I have presentations intended to provide overview of the process by which we went through to arrive at the recommended amendments. And then I want to provide a brief overview of each amendment. The commission, I realize we have a couple new members of the commission. The commission's been at work on this for, as Chuck mentioned, for about two years. We've discussed everything and presented the same thing at length. It's been discussed across multiple meetings and across multiple different public forums, including presentations and workshops. But it's really important for us to provide a summary of exactly what it is that we're advancing and make sure we all have a full understanding of what's being proposed. So with that said, my agenda for this evening, because this presentation is very straightforward, is to discuss the purpose of the update, the process.
Excuse me, Francesco, one sec.
I don't think I'll be able to. Yeah, no, please.
Make it full screen now.
Yeah, no, please.
Can you get a larger screen? We can't read it.
Move up. Is there way on your end, Francesco, to go to presentation mode?
Yeah, can you expand it to presentation mode? Go to slide mode? That'll give us a full screen.
I am in the presentation mode.
Okay, she's trying to do it. Hold on, maybe we can do it here.
Yeah.
Hang on one sec. Hang on one sec, Francesco. We're trying to make some adjustments here.
Maybe the view, I'm not sure.
The challenge is that it's on the desktop.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. It's not.
Well, the desktop app, but.
Okay.
Let me try a different type of share and just see if that resolves the issue.
I know it's.
Okay.
There would have been manageable reordering documents.
Would it make a difference if you opened it as PDF?
Yeah, I'm going to first try, I guess, how the way you can share it.
I think if we do it as a PDF, it might. It might be all screen.
Yeah, I was going to try a different. Try a different.
I just tried a search that said hit key F11. Bigger, is that work?
How's that there? Can you see it? Can you see it now?
I think we're about to move our chairs closer.
What if you look at the back of this screen? This one is readable here from my seat. Maybe go sit in one of the seats. Pop on the, I guess it would be right hand side here.
Here we go. Let's try this. Let me know if this works.
It's actually smaller.
Yeah, it's smaller. What you had before actually was there. That's good.
I'm sharing my whole screen.
Yeah, that's good.
That's better than that? Everybody see it good enough to get through this? Okay, Francesco, we've got the approval to go ahead on this side here.
Okay, very good. So assuming I will, I'd like to ask the purpose of this topic wider town, and the commission and the planning department has taken on this initiative, which we're actually three years into. The purpose is to provide a set of zoning regulations that are user-friendly and accessible to a wide audience. And additionally, zoning regulations are fully compliant with statutes and supported by case law. And as part of this work, we also explore recommended amendments to better protect environmental resources and support the development of housing and economic development throughout the town. But the process has been led by the planning department, and we started out with Keith Burns and Flip Beniler. We worked with for a couple of years, and now fortunately we have Candace and Broom and others that are continuing to move things forward on the administrative side. And we met regularly, as most commissioners are aware, we met regularly with the planning and zoning committee. They acted as a steering committee for this work in the amendment. We met with them monthly, beginning in July 2022 until June of this past year. All of those meetings have been opened to the public, and recordings were made available in town court slightly. The update of the zoning regulations took a two-phase approach, and in first phase, the amendments were adopted in November 16, 2023. So it's been two years now that updating zoning regulations has been in place. That draft was really intended to address errors and inconsistencies in mission, formatting, and steps toward compliance. The focus of the Phase One effort was very much limited to that, and we very intentionally did not make impactful changes to the zoning regulations that change what's allowed or how things are regulated. That effort was reserved for Phase Two. In this Phase Two effort, which has been ongoing for two years now, we've broken into five major work areas or topic areas. We began with environmental resources, conservation, sustainability, and resilience topics, as applicable across the regulations. We then have gone to issues surrounding housing, the residential uses in districts, followed by commercial, industrial, and mixed-use zoning in those districts. We also did quite a lot of work on your proper and green requirements, parking, lighting, signage. All the requirements are applicable to a lot of property. And then finally, we've made a, we've done a lot of work with respect to your administrative processes, planning requirement, and requirements. All right. As I mentioned, this has really been three years in total we've been at work with Phase One, completed in fall 2023, and we've been actively working on this basic work since that time. While we've been drafting amendments, considering amendments, we have not brought any of these Phase Two amendments to a public hearing for consideration of adoption prior to this evening. The intention of this process was to allow for ample time for the community to review, to provide feedback, for us to conduct meetings and workshop, to further consider the zoning regulations, to work our way through the entire regulations, and consider how permanent planning requirements might impact your residential zoning. And consequently, we have arrived at where we have this evening, a set of recommended amendments. It's really been two years since we developed.
I just want to, Francesco, let me just insert gun thing, and if you could put that last slide back up. At the beginning of Phase Two, we had some difficulties with attendance at workshops and attendance on these Zoom meetings, and we wanted to ensure that we were reaching the intended audience, and we were. So we changed our approach, we changed the level of outreach, and we amended the process. And this slide reflects that amended process. And we got a much better feedback as a result of changing the outreach. But we did make some adjustments. I'm sorry, go ahead.
And that's absolutely right, and it's a perfect segue for this slide. As Chuck mentioned, in the Phase Two, it was very much designed to invite the community into the process, whereas Phase One was a far more midterm process. And that began in July with, we conducted a virtual public meeting to the Phase One amendment before adopting them, which we also conducted in-person presentation of those recommended amendments. We followed that, and in November, with the workshop, and that was our first workshop, met dealt with issues surrounding environmental issues, sustainability, and resilience. And it came back in March, we conducted a virtual public meeting presenting our recommended amendments surrounding those issues. That was followed up in April 2024 with a housing and residential district workshop, a virtual presentation surrounding housing and residential districts in June 2024. In September of last year, we conducted a commercial, industrial, and mixed-use zoning workshop, and then we followed that up, this past framing with the workshop. Kind of a capstone workshop, reviewing all the material that we had worked on previously, introducing all that content to the public, and inviting them in for comment. That April workshop was really critical because what we did coming out of that workshop was we prioritized amendments, and we organized them into amendments as we moved forward to this public hearing this evening. And that was directly the feedback we received at that April workshop. In addition to the public meetings and workshop, we conducted an online survey as well. We had very good participation in the survey. It covered a range of issues. We asked about people's concerns about neighborhoods and housing, village centers, the environment, and host issues, including coastal zone issues. And the feedback we received from that really helped us to tailor our workshops to respond to the issues and concerns as they were hearing of. So as I mentioned, our April workshop from this past year really made it clear to us that while we had developed really over 54 individual recommended amendments, that the community was really, only felt comfortable with moving forward certain types of amendments, and they really wanted us to focus on those amendments that they were supporting. And they also heard that there were a number of recommended amendments that people felt very uncomfortable moving forward with without additional study as to the potentials that might be caused by amendment regulations in those ways. And much of that surrounded coastal zone issues and flood zone issues. So coming out of the April workshop, we organized what we did, an approach we call triage. We organized the 54 recommended amendments and issued recommendations to advance for public hearing for consideration of adoption. That's exactly what it is that we'll be going into detail about this evening. That is 37 recommended amendments in total, some of them very minor, and some of them quite with us. We also identified several recommendations that we continue to leave out a lot of comments, but we think they require further consideration by the commission, further review and discussion with the public as well. And then there were 11 recommended amendments that we agreed to table indefinitely. They could be revisited in the future, but because of whether the opposition to those ideas, or it be the complexity of the regulation that we've introduced, and the difficulty in administering it, we decided to table those. I don't want to go into detail this evening about the recommendations that we've tabled and will consider in the future. All of those recommended amendments are available online. And I'll show you exactly where it goes to the planning department website. There's a page called Comprehensive Zoning Rewrite. At the bottom of that page are all three groups of these amendments. So every amendment that we developed as part of this Phase Two process, whether or not it's a big amendment, is available there for review. The recommendations meeting for this evening span 37 different individual recommended amendments. All are designed and intended to be adopted together. However, they have been structured so that they can be individually adopted. It's not incumbent upon the commission to adopt all 37 in order for these individual amendments to be effective. They can't be individually adopted. So these recommended amendments, in addition to being online, I mean, they were submitted to SC Talk and then to D for comment, and we received positive responses with respect to what's been proposed. And these documents, in addition to being posted online, have been then made available to the town court. The recommended amendments that's for us this evening are, we organize them into seven different groups or types of amendments that really reflect the different areas of the zoning regulations and the type of content in those sections of the zoning regulations. And those include administrative amendments. We have 17 of those. Many of these are very, very minor, quite important. The second group are commercial and industrial zone amendments, of which we have five. We have accessory use amendments as well, parking, buffering, screening, and landscaping amendments. And then we have, which five are other aspects of regulations that have been substantially amended, including within that are signing regulations, outdoor lighting regulations, and a few others. Finally, six coverage limits, and that's a very important discussion, so I want to make sure we're all clear about exactly what those recommendations are. And then finally, some very minor zoning boundary map amendments. And what I'll do this evening is I'll take you through these one by one. I think what I'll do is I'll briefly pause after introducing each recommended amendment, and if the commission has any questions, I'm happy to expand upon that. But otherwise, before we open things up to larger discussion, I prefer to get through all the recommended amendments because we have 37 to review. I think it's to everyone's advantage to really hear them all in summary before opening up discussion because some of the amendments may be able to address issues that we might otherwise, as I've talked about earlier. So for the most part, I'd like to get through all of these, and then I'd be open up discussion. And then I can also share my screen. I could share the document as part of this packet that has all the individual memorandum for each recommended amendment. I could share that as necessary as well. Right, does that sound okay?
That's a good process. I would like to hold public comment until the end, which is typically done. Matter of fact, if the commission has any questions after each group, that's fine. Any questions from the public can be handled as part of the public hearing and the public process, which follows this.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. I'll continue. Recommendation one is to remove the single-family home exemption from the coastal management area of O'Leary. And this is, this is who we don't have choice with doing. And to pop a tag, 2533, remove the single-family home exemption, which means all development on coast, including single-family homes, has to go through a coastal zone review. So this is something we have to, we're compelled to update the zoning regulations to reflect that, that sort of change. Recommendation two, and this is very minor, it's to the lineman, section 7, 1734, which currently assigns the authority to approve auto sale service establishments to the CBA. And this was changed instead, a couple of years ago, section 5 and 3 of our zoning regulations correctly identifies the zoning enforcement officers being the person that approved locations. And so this is a matter of housekeeping and clean up the language in section 7E to make sure that we're not providing reference to CBA. All right. Recommendation three, this is much more substantial, is to amend the validity of the site plan application regulations. First of all, the section, the name does not actually properly describe it. It's not validity of the site plan. It's really required under completion of work associated with site plans, so part of our recommendation has been retitled to be a little more intuitive. But more important is the fact that as the coastal public Act 2129, it later extended the expiration of amendments on site plans depending on when they're approved, and much of that was due to construction delays related to COVID. And depending on when the site plan was approved, the site plans could be extended as long as 19 years. So it's really incumbent upon us to update this section of regulations to ensure that it's absolutely consistent with general statutes, and that comes from section 83 of connected general statute, which does provide a little more flexibility in the timeline completion allowed for any project for which a site plan has been approved. All right. Recommendation four is very much related to that, and this surrounds the commission's action on the site plan and special use permit. There's a lot of content here that is overlapping with your site plan regulations that are currently in section 15 3A. So this is a matter of cleaning up the language once again to ensure that we're not implying that a special use permit or a site plan can be revoked within a period of time that statute says cannot revoke it. And that's the purpose of this amendment. It's a very minor text change, again, to ensure consistency with connected general statute, section 83.
Can I just ask a quick question on this one? I wasn't in the meeting when we.
We have a question. Sure, Dave, go ahead.
So don't we, maybe this is a question more for the group, but don't we do a Christmas market? What was that, Pup or Eater? Was that, was that a temporary permit? I mean, do we do temporary permits for things that happen in the summer or holiday events? Or do we want to retain the right to do that?
I don't recall the details.
I'm going to take it, I'm going to try and respond to that, and I'll leave Chuck to fill in as he sees fit. This is a very nuanced area of the law. All right. And so that can be a very difficult question to answer in the black and white. But however, you can issue temporary permits. Those temporary permits can be a special use permit. The protections afforded under statute are really The protections afforded under statute are really intended to, designed to, to protect a construction project that has to prove site plan. To ensure that the developer is afforded adequate time to develop the project. And that's the intention of the statute. So you can apply permanent limits on a temporary basis, but it's treated differently than a site plan approval for a development project. And retain that right to issue temporary permits.
I guess, so that would be a temporary site plan.
Yeah.
Okay, we're explaining.
And that's something you would want to state in the record whenever you're making decisions as to the purposes of what's being approved, making it clear that it's not being approved as a permanent use, it's being approved as a temporary use, and that the applicant is understanding that and in agreement that that's what the intended uses. It's really important to state that on the record.
Francesco, if we could just move this along a little bit quicker.
Very well. Recommendation five is to amend, well, we just talked about that. Regulation six is to amend changes and modifications approved of plans and special use permit. Currently, any minor changes are referred to the commission. And what this does, and what that does is obviously it takes a much longer time for any minor change to get approved. This shifts minor changes to statute. And so allows any minor changes to a special use permit use or approved plan to be approved administratively, and statute has the option to refer it to the commission if they feel it orders unmade and changing. And we provide a lot of language to describe exactly what this thing is, just a minor and major change. All right, recommendation seven is to amend historic and cultural site regulations. This is essentially a regulation on demolition that restricts demolition. However, the towns with their zoning regulations does not have the authority to restrict demolition or to attach conditions, zoning conditions that restrict uses based upon demolition. That has to come through either local historic district regulations or a town ordinance demolition delay ordinance position, which the county does have and has the authority to implement it. And so instead of having a regulation that is restrictive and exceeds your zoning authority should, instead within the zoning regulations, point to your existing demolition delay ordinance, and that's exactly what this amendment would do. All right, recommendation eight is to amend your paper street regulations. So paper street is a map street that has not been constructed, it was approved, this is part of the development. Your current regulations restrict improvements of property located on a paper street, even if they extend provided driveway access off of an existing street. And we think that's overly restricted, so we've removed that prohibition on developing on development of a property that's on a paper street. They obviously still have to provide sufficient access to the property. Recommendation nine is to amend your natural and unique feature regulations. And essentially, we're just tightening up the language to make it exactly clear as to how things should be working. And this mostly applies to preservation trees and removal of trees. And so really, we're, again, trying to put staff in a position to make decisions to talk about these things and improve these things. Currently, there's just a broad reference to the Department of Planning of removing, approving the removal of trees. And it's really important to identify with staff within the planning department. And again, the staff has the option of referring any decisions to the commission as well. Recommendation ten consolidates your soil erosion and sediment control requirements. They're located in a couple of different sections of the regulations now, in both twelve eight and fifteen five. And there's a little bit redundancy, there's some overlapping practices. We want to put it all in one place so there's no confusion in that the regulation is absolutely consistent. Additionally, we're referring to the most recent version of the Connecticut guidelines, which were adopted, were implemented in twenty twenty-four, and so we now point to those. Recommendation eleven is very similar to recommendation ten. It's to update your stormwater standards and relocate some of those very technical standards to your town's technical standards document. The zoning regulations should really concern itself with zoning authority and the basic requirements of what needs to be provided. And anything that's very technical in nature, like the size of a pipe or the sideline touch, or touch base, that should be in the town technical standards document, and you should refer to it. And the advantage of that is the town can keep those standards up to date without having to go through a zoning amendment process. So we amended the language to exactly that and to make it clearer just on those technical standards to the town's technical standards document. Recommendation twelve is to provide reference to Stonington aquifer protection area regs in the zoning regulations and also to update those regulations. So the town has an aquifer protection area. That's a state designated area, and within that area is a set of regulations that are state requirements. Your zoning regulations do have a groundwater protection overlay area, but there is no reference to the state's delineated aquifer protection area. So it's really important, even though you have a set groundwater protection area regs that covers that area, to specifically reference the state regulations. You can update those regulations based on the most recent model of municipal ordinances provided by the county. So that's exactly what this regulation does, just updates everything and ensures that the regulations are comprehensive and aren't overlooking any state requirements. Additionally, state groundwater has a very similar type of designation. It's called the community well health protection area. It extends into Stonington, the northeastern part of Stonington, and it covers mostly a residential area where essentially there's, the area is fairly well protected from industrial uses and anything that could be a source of contamination. We've recommended making reference to that developed protection area within your zoning regulations as well. And that's exactly what this amendment would do. Recommendation thirteen is to amend your noise and vibration regulations. And this is very minor. The point of this is to make the regulations in your zoning regs consistent if they're worthless. And they were ninety percent consistent, but not a hundred percent consistent because your zoning regs really did not have a cap yet for Sunday mornings to really require noise to be withheld until ten AM on Sunday mornings or eight AM on Sunday mornings. And so we've amended it to match your municipal ordinance exactly. The value of having this in both places is that it's both enforceable by the zoning enforcement officer and any other municipal representative such as a police officer. That's the value of having it in both places, but it should be consistent in both places. Recommendation fourteen is to amend the telecommunications antennas and tower regs. Essentially, Connecticut zoning council has authority over this, and the town has little to no authority. So what we've done is to be rewritten, read, amended, and repaired them down to focus on the town so that the town can communicate the level of expectations surrounding how these are to be located and treated in the town, and that can be weighed and considered by the zoning council. But we've removed that language that suggests that the zoning commission has the authority to approve it because they... Recommendation fifteen enables third-party review. The commission has the authority when they're reviewing an application to request an applicant to conduct a study or even to hire or consult a conductive study to review traffic or any other, any other issues they deem to be bad. However, you also have the authority to require the applicant to pay for any study. And it's to your advantage to put that right in the zoning regulations so that expectation is absolutely clear and it's not negotiated on a basis by basis basis. And that's what this amendment did. Recommendation sixteen is to amend your architectural design review regulations. And this is really primarily as related to accessory dwellings, which is currently required to go through architectural design review, attached units, that is. And so we propose removing that requirement to better support the development of such units. These are considered missing middle housing. And the state is very much in favor of this type of housing amongst other types of missing middle housing being instructed, but we want to move barriers to that, and it's exactly what this would do. Recommendation seventeen surrounds undersized lots. The town has hundreds of lots, mostly residential, that are undersized to the zone in which located, meaning that they simply don't meet the lot size requirement. It's a one acre zone, many lots are half acre or quarter acre. You do have an existing regulation that's very narrowly crafted to provide some relief to those properties. We've expanded it to make it, first of all, easier to understand the regulation, but also to apply to more than just single-family residential. The current exemption is only for single-family residential, this would apply for all types of development, allowing development on lots that are substandard in size, providing it mean all your other voluntary and height requirements. And the intention here is really to reduce non-conformities that were not created by one of those properties, that are created by the regulations later being imposed on products that are developed. Recommendation eighteen is to consolidate uses. Having broad use groups is best practice for zoning regulations. As you get into very specific and tailored uses, your regulations get very complicated and it can really generate conflict. You know, by example, if you allow something like a paid and tapless sale in one location, that's a type of retail, it's questionable as to whether or not that would be allowed in other places, if they allow just general retail. So to the greatest extent possible, we want to merge these extremely specific uses into larger use groups, and we propose removing that for a handful of uses. And as we, we're all very well considered to ensure that we're not going to allow something somewhere where it isn't currently allowed or where it's not compatible with the zoning question. Recommendation nineteen is to expand the range of permitted uses in commercial and industrial zones. And here, through this effort, we're very intentional to allow uses where they are not currently used, used, and this are not currently allowed. And this came as a quite good deliberation, we started with a very big list, considering to chump that down and consider lately. And so we're allowing uses such as contractor yards, distilleries, boat storage, microbreweries, restaurants, mixed-use residential in zones in which they're not currently allowed. And these are all commercial, industrial, and mixed-use zones. But where they would be compatible with other uses that are currently allowed in those zones, and of course, we're requiring special use permits or site plan requirements as applicable. Recommendation twenty is to reduce the permit for application requirements for longer manages of PB five on that zone. Very narrow and specific, it actually started with a much bigger list, we were considering reducing permit requirements to really reduce the number of special use requirements and have more site land and zoning permit protocols. And ultimately, the only link we could draw upon was longer manages of PB five, stepping that down to a special use permit to a site plan application. And, you know, I think for longer manages, it's a very rare permit requirement, it ensures that there aren't limits for the structure and any supporting facilities or property located on the property. Also in PB five, recommendation twenty-one seeks to better support the mixed-use residential. Mixed use is required in the PB five of buildings. The intention, the purpose of that regulation is to ensure that it remains an active and vibrant village and commercial center. However, I think we can all appreciate the fact that the retail market and the office market have been weakening, the housing market is set up strong, which means that what's really motivating for a lot of commercial building, right, house conversion to residential. And we want to make sure that the commercial requirement for that is not excessive and doesn't kill a project. So we really just softened the edges on this regulation, allowing for higher density of development right now, one unit for a thousand square feet of buildings allowed, a drawn mounted diameter square feet, a thousand square feet is a huge unit for those type of buildings. And then also increasing the share of residential, allowing buildings in two-thirds to eighty percent. Just softening the edges, we'll test the waters and see if that works. And we have a lot of testimony in favor of this. Recommendation twenty-two is to regulate outdoor-oriented, outdoor-oriented establishments, of which you have no regulations. And this is a protected use, which means you can't outright prohibit it in the town because it's considered free speech. So you have to allow it, and if you don't have the regulation controlling this, it has to be allowed wherever comparable use is allowed. So if it's an outdoor bookstore, wherever you allow retail bookstores, it has to be allowed there. Entertainment, if it's a dance club, and wherever you allow live entertainment, et cetera. So what this use does, it defines it, it identifies the permit requirements, it identifies where it's allowed, and it establishes distancing requirements from sensitive uses. And the only place it's being allowed is in the ancient I-60 zones for a special use The next item is to update the regulations to keeping of domestic animals. If these regulations were strictly enforced as they're currently written, it would suggest that they cannot keep a dog or cat if your lot is non-conforming to monster. That's exactly how the regulations are written, and no one agrees that that is the intention. And so we're similarly removing that lot size requirement from the regs so that's not misinterpreted or misapplied, and this is really that we're going to force, we're going to get rid of that. Recommendation twenty-four is to provide more flexibility in the height and location of round mounted small solar energy systems. So we're not talking about solar farms here, we're talking about, you know, a handful of panels above someone's driveway or above a CBS parking lot, something to that effect. Currently, a height limit of fifteen feet prohibits their location above a parking area. And so we want to increase that requirement and increasing the height limits to twenty feet so that they can be deployed over a parking area. In addition to that, if located over a parking area, we recommend exempting the lot coverage limits that are not essentially twice the bulk of the coverage or the parking lot area coverage of the solar panels. Recommendation twenty-five is to amend outdoor vendor regulations. So we're talking about food trucks here, for the most part, and if your current regulations treat them as a principal use, that means they can be the only use on properties, so they can be the only use on the vacant lot. And the downside of that is, without a principal use, there's really no one else there to maintain the property, ensure the property is properly maintained, and that's a proper parking lot and access and all the other measures that would otherwise be required for a permanent principal use. So instead, we're restructuring this red, we're still going to allow them in GC six E C A where they currently allow them, but we're going to treat them as accessory use of acquiring, that's a, excuse me, requirement that be accessory to a principal use on the property. Recommendation forty-six, reduce the permit requirements for AD use. I touched upon this already in terms of removing the architectural design review requirement for AD use. This also seeks to support development AD use by reducing, attaching AD from the special use permit to a site land... This also seeks to support development AD used by reducing attached AD from the special use permit to a cycling land application requirement. We don't think a public area is necessary for, you know, dwelling unit thing, you build a hook or garage in your backyard. You do think a cycling land requirement is very appropriate to ensure that it's properly located on the property and has access and all the other things that the regulations require. Recordation 27 is to amend your off-street parking regulations. And this really cleans up the regulations and makes them more black and white. There's a lot of gray area right now. And there are many, many exceptions and tremendous amount of flexibility, excessive flexibility in the regulations. That essentially allow for the use of the parking requirements. And really can result in a property that's underparked, doesn't have the parking it needs. And then comes enforcement, a real enforcement challenge. So we removed a lot of the soft language on the regulations. We've made it very black and white. And I think it's going to be a much more complex set of regulations to administer and to enforce. Recordation 28, amend the permit requirements for off-street parking. There's a bit of a loophole right now in ways as written, which the regs say if you're adding twenty or more spaces, you need to pull a special use permit. So theoretically, it's the only way to get a cycling pool for nineteen spaces. And then a year later, come back to another nineteen, and then a year later for another nineteen. And they never ever have to go through a special use process, permit approval process. So here, you just said, if you have more than twenty spaces, you need a special use permit for that parking period. Recordation 28, update the parking area landscaping standards. You have standards right now that require three-planting and landscaping and islands. But they're fairly vague. They just describe what the ratio or areas of the parking area. It doesn't provide any detail as to how that should be designed or employed. The calculations, the way the calculations are required can be difficult to calculate. And consequently, because the regulations are somewhat unclear, they're not strictly enforced when applications are approved. And that's a problem. So we restructured these regulations to be very clear, to have supporting visuals. And why we want to ensure is that when parking lots get built, that they are adequately landscaped for both aesthetic purposes and environmental purposes as well. To reduce the baseline timeline effect and to reduce stormwater. Recordation 30 is to update the block area supremely requirement standards and bonding requirements for landscaping. Much like your parking landscaping requirements, these were incredibly complex standards. Spread out across many, many pages and sections of the regulations. With different language and slightly different standards across the regulations. That made it extremely difficult to interpret exactly what the requirement is and how it should be applied. And there was really no rational basis for the way the upper rain and screen requirement varied from zone to zone. We replaced that and consolidated all that content in one location. We provided supporting visuals and we provided a very clear standard by which can be followed that are rational. You know, relating to the intensity of the zones, the intensity of the uses, the size of the properties in the zones. And their form of proportion in that way, I think will be much more effective. Even if some of the standards are actually lesser than the current distance is required. We've essentially required that all the blockers be a little smaller in some cases, that they be a much higher quality for specifying interiors. Recordation 31 is to establish a primary landscaping requirement for commercial industrial zones. So this is another requirement that we get there on top of any parking landscaping requirement and any blocking or screening requirement. Essentially, right now, it's possible that an industrial property, a front yard, could be built without triggering any of the parking lot landscaping or blocking and screening requirements. In which case, they could do absolutely nothing with landscaping in a front yard. It could just be barren mulch or rocks or whatever it may be. This is intended to ensure that the fronts of properties are adequately landscaped. And it provides a tremendous amount of flexibility in how that is done, whether it be lawn, planting vegetation, et cetera. But the point is, the front of these properties, you need to be landscaped. And that's exactly what this regulation introduces, which does not currently exist in some conditions right now. Recordation 32 is to update the client hazard overlay measures regulations. To ensure and ensure consistency with both state and industrial guidelines. Connected to park and to the environment, provides model collecting regulations for coastal communities. And so we updated your client hazard regs to be absolutely consistent with these requirements. As I mentioned, the recommended amendments were, as far as we're sure, repeating. And so we've had a positive referral from them with respect to these recommendations. We are not introducing any new regulation that is not required by FEMA or PD. And really, we're tightening up the requirements and making it explicitly clear as to what's required to be compliant with state building code and FEMA standards. And that's exactly what we're doing. Recordation 33 is to update sign regulations. This is a very important and substantial amendment. It completely rewrites your existing sign regs, which are located in section fourteen. And it's really something that would compel to do by the Reed versus Howie Gilbert Supreme Report ruling. That ruling was ten years old. It's really just starting to find its way into local regulations and some of the local courts. And it essentially says that you cannot regulate signs based upon the content of that sign, the message of that sign. You need to be focused on time, place, and manner. You know, how long on sign out or what time to turn on, where is it located, what is it instructed of, how big is it, how many of them are. Really the physical attributes of the sign. So we rewritten your sign regulations to shift away from any and suggest what the message is on the sign. And to focus on the construction of the sign. And we did that with the intention of not substantially changing what's currently allowed. So if you can currently have a building sign that's x amount of square feet and a pre-standing sign, all of that is still left. The terminology may be different and how some of the procedures are a little different. But I mean, we've gone through tremendous, tremendous effort here to not substantially in any way change what's allowed with respect to the sign. While of course, being compliant with the case law. Recordation thirty-four, this recommendation significantly spans your outdoor lighting regulations, which are right now very limited. And the intention is to reduce light usage. And so we've introduced a set of regulations that are based upon the Connecticut model outdoor lighting regs. They're dark sky type regulations that are intended to reduce light usage. And they're applicable primarily to special use permit and, excuse me, cycling and application proof uses. So for the most part, my regulations don't apply to single-family uses with the exception of the regulations intended to control any nuisance lighting. And there's all sorts of exemptions here, such as holiday lighting exemption. Low bright lights pictures, like anything less than sixty watt with light is exempt. There's a lot of flexibility here, but this is really intended to capture, you know, those big commercial areas with all the lighting and sure that there's not excessive lighting by inclusion. Recordation thirty-five, this is two-part regulations. I'll go with thirty-five A first. The second part of this is, it really needs work in tandem, so it's all part of a larger regulation. Is to replace your floor area ratio standards with lot coverage limits. Floor area ratio standards are intended to control density. And they control that by allowing the property to have a certain amount of floor area in the building, essentially gross floor area in the building relative to the size of that lot. And that's a good control on density, but that is nothing to protect the property from being overbuilt with imperious surface coverage. Which could mean parking lots, driveways, and other types of accessory structures that essentially could cover the entire lot. And really creating imperious surface that really exacerbates these stormwater management issues. So the way that most communities have handled this and worked with others, means to exactly this, to move away from the floor area ratio standard to a lot coverage limit. That sets a maximum amount of imperious coverage for the lot. And as a result, that's a zip back fill limit on density because you can only get so much of the building and park. And provide the parking necessary to that building and all the hard-scape space necessary to support it. Given the size of the lot, when you have a limit that's set at sixty, seventy, eighty percent, whatever it may be. So this, this regulation shifts the emphasis from concerns about density to concerns about environmental protection. And really, aesthetics of the landscape. And so I think it's a much better control on the type of development you get than the floor area ratio. And so the floor area ratio now, because it's a variable for imperious coverage, then we have to, we have a control on density. You don't need the FAR standard. We have kept that in place for a couple of districts where that standard is really tied in very closely to development standards. That includes the maritime areas district and your youth regs to the congregate living facilities. So we kept it there, it's very difficult to remove it. But otherwise, we've recommended shifting all of your bold standards to a lot coverage limit. And those were, and those limits, as we established, are based upon existing FAR limits. So there's a very direct correlation. So wherever FAR is more restrictive on density, what you'll see is that we have a fairly low lot coverage limit that's allowed, such as in some more rural residence zones. Related to that, is we wanted to fill in some flexibility for a property if they, or which did in covering more of the property with development. While also incentivizing sustainable development techniques. So we've introduced a scoring system that would allow tenants to cover more of their property than would otherwise be required. In exchange for reducing stormwater runoff, reducing light production pollution, providing green roofs, building LED-approved buildings, and other vendors such as that. And it's a whole scoring system. And it's still very restrictive, but it does provide some flexibility in lot coverage. This recommended amendment is only possible if you choose to adopt lot coverage limits. Otherwise, this incentive is welcome. And the final two amendments that are related to your zoning district boundaries. And we began this work with a very comprehensive review of all of your zoning districts. And of lot sizes within those zoning districts and the uses within those zoning districts. And we initially entertained far more substantial changes to your zoning district and the zoning classification of many properties in order to reduce lot conformities. Ultimately, what we agreed on are two uses that I think were just incredibly obvious to everyone. That the lines were drawn improperly or just at least not known as well that they could have been drawn. And that starts with this area in the northeast part of town. And it's really the interface in RA twenty, CS five. And there's a little floating island of RA twenty there that doesn't follow any of these property boundaries. And doesn't have any multifamily development within that area. So it makes very little sense. It's likely an artifact of some property usage that they're long ago. So this area really should be rezoned, reflect the properties that are there, and the zoning should follow property lines. And so what that means is really expanding the RA twenty, to capture all those residential properties up at condition leaning and behind and east of Timber Ridge Drive. Into expanding CS five to cover the extent to follow the property lines of those commercial properties in that area. And to remove that RA twenty that's just floating there for no discernible reason. And this is a very limited, it's a very, very, very targeted zoning amendment. On the other end of town, near Alba Avenue, Puffup Street, there's an area that's currently in the PD5. The PD5 five zone, the purpose of the zone is really, it's closer, it's more in the west part of town, Mystic Village, Mystic Area, South of Mystic Village. And the properties in that zone are very different than the properties here. However, we do have an existing LS five zone on this location. And so what we're recommending is just rezoning the area of LS five. And then connecting the existing LS five zone to the PD5 area to create one contiguous local shopping zone. While also removing a town-owned property that's right now bifurcated by the zoning lines. They don't follow the property lines. And rezoning that town-owned property to RA twenty, the residential district that's closest. So again, these are very targeted zoning amendments that require these properties in more appropriated zones. And redraw, redraw the zoning district lines to follow the property lines that's living in progress. All right, so I successfully, fully walked us through those thirty-seven amendments. There is one thing I want to know before I finish speaking and hand it back over to the commission. House bill eight thousand two was signed by Senator Flamon on November twenty-sixth, last week, Wednesday before Thanksgiving. The bill contains multiple zoning implications, most of which would be affected as early as July of twenty twenty-sixth. As related to our work, primarily applies to multifamily residences. Essentially, what the legislative saying is that you have to allow any multifamily residents to nine-year-old limits in any commercial zone. And you can't require indoor cycling pool, you can't require a special use permit for it. And also, you can't require parking. So obviously, this can require additional work by the commission to entertain these uses and consider exactly how they want to handle it. If it's not straightforward, you do have some options for providing some guidelines for this type of development to ensure that it's appropriate to where it's located. However, I don't think there's anything in the bill that should cause you to delay any of this work we're doing. Or cause you for any reason not to move forward with these amendments. The reason being is that all of the proposed amendments I've walked through, none of them are in conflict with what the state is trying to achieve. While, while the regulations as written will fully support what the state is required to do. We are moving in the direction of being more supportive of housing development by lowering standards, requirements for AD use. By allowing for more mixed-use development across zones. So we're moving in that direction. And for that reason, I think while this is very important and is competitive, means you can add more work in the future. I don't think there's anything here that requires us to put the brakes on what we're doing right now. All right, and after that being said, I'm having to turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you, Francisco. Good job, good job on summarizing. Does anyone on the commission have any questions, Francisco? Any questions before we move to public input? Okay, I'm just going to grab the sign up list. Has everybody had a chance to sign up that wishes to speak either for or against or make a general statement? Why don't you just take a minute, if you would, to sign up? Just take a minute here while, while you do that. Just take a minute here while, while you do that.
I think apartments and all parking. You know, the other reason I have that. Coverage requirement. The state has created water regulations and they really, they make coverage issues mandatory where if you increase the imperious area in a particular piece of property, you've got to retain the first inch and a third of water on the site above and beyond any other potential requirements, you've got to retain it on the site, it can't flow offsite. So the only way that you can really make those determinations is based on coverage.
Okay. All right. Any staff input at all, Candy, before we move to public input here? Any staff comments?
Not until after the public is due.
Okay. All right, I'm just going to ask if you have lengthy statements, written statements, if you could, you know, paraphrase them in a reasonable amount of time and not just read the entire statement. The commission will receive your written statement and will fully consider it. Okay. First person is, it's like Liz Storm, I'm sorry if that, I didn't get that. Okay. Can you just say your address, please? I know we have it here on the forum.
It's Liz Stern, nine O Drive in Stonington. This is not part of my statement because I didn't expect it. I wanted to thank Francisco for mentioning H B eight zero zero two. I had that as part of my statement tonight and I took it out, but I'm encouraged by what I heard tonight. And then I am here because of housing component. I want to thank the commission and Francisco and your team, F H I, for all that you've done to keep us informed and all the work over the past three years. I've been to several of your presentations and they are always top notch and I really appreciate it. But I'm here tonight, I want to call attention to some of the tabled amendments that would have had a dynamic and positive impact on addressing housing opportunities in Stonington. I support possible future amendments that all, that will allow for more housing opportunity and as the P O C D update continues, along with the work of the current Housing Opportunities Commission being done, I ask the commission to revisit the amendments that were tabled or put for future consideration and keep an open mind moving forward because I think there's a lot more room for some more dynamic addressing in our planning zoning code to address more diverse and just general opportunities for housing in Stonington. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Leslie. Fran Hoffman.
Yes, I'd like to add to my colleague.
I'm sorry, if you could come up and speak in the microphone, please. Just say your name and address before you start speaking. It's very difficult for us to get the record straight here if we, we don't have someone speaking in the microphone.
Yes, yes. Frances Hoffman, four Money Point Road, Mystic. I have a colleague here that I'm basically backup if needed, and so I prefer to hold my comments until after she does it during.
Fine. And if it would be easier for you to sit when you come back up again, feel free to.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay? All right, thank you. We'll ask you again. Sorry, something's printing just a little bit. Chris Johnson. Okay, Chris Johnson. Evening, Chris.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me? Yes?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you for all of your work on the zoning rewrite. It is a tremendous undertaking and your work is apparent. But I'm here, I live at thirty seven Greenmanville Avenue in Mystic, I'm a member of the Stonington Board of Finance, I'm also the chair of the Stonington Climate Change Task Force. So my support of the following recommendations is based largely on my support of coastal resiliency, affordable housing, and historic preservation. So I'm in support of amendments one, ten, eleven, twelve, twenty-four, thirty-two, thirty-five A and B, and twenty-nine I've added here. So those amendments. And I also have written comment here from Climate Change Task Force member Sharon Lynch, who lives at fifty-three Main Street in Stonington Borough, in support of recommendation of twenty-four for the ground mounted solar energy systems, and I can submit that to you.
Thank you, Chris. Does that conclude your comments?
Yes, it does.
Thank you very much. Debbie Pryor. Good evening, Debbie.
Hi, I live in twenty-one East Forest Road, Mystic, Mason's Island. I'm here representing the Mystic Garden Club. Mystic Garden Club's in full support of those recommended amendments to the zoning regulations that promote the use of native plants and landscaping designs. Such practices are beneficial to the health and living of our local and regional ecosystems. Native plants are more viable, more sustainable, less expensive to maintain, and more likely to survive well and in harmony with other native species of plants, insects, animals, and soils. The emphasis by the town helps educate residents and town officials alike in using beneficial practices and informed choices. The specific zoning regulation recommendations that we're supporting are R thirty update buffer area and screening requirement, and standard R two and R thirty-five B sustainability incentive. We applaud these important recommendations and recognize their contribution to benefit our community. In addition, modifications of several other zoning regulations would do much to add to the strength of efforts to promote the use of native plants such as section R twenty-nine, section R thirty-one, section thirteen point eight point four, encouragement of the use of native plantings when new landscape elements are proposed before the Planning and Zoning Commission. We also support emphasis on the use of native plants on town property to help set an example for private residential and commercial property. In summary, the Mystic Garden Club fully supports any town action that promotes and encourages the use of native plants in landscaping whenever possible. Thank you for the opportunity to weigh in on this important issue and to partner with the town on best practices.
Thank you for all your good work in the garden club.
Thank you.
And for your comments this evening. Please give them to our acting secretary. Next on the list is Carleen Donarumo. Good evening, Carleen.
For the record, my name is Carleen Donarumo. With all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I have spent a lot of time the whole last week and into today analyzing and reviewing and comparing all of the different amendments that are being proposed tonight. I have written a paper that I request that I am going to read completely into the record just as Mr. Francisco had his time for a whole hour. I believe I will not take an hour, maybe ten or fifteen minutes at the very most.
I think, I think that's very reasonable.
Okay. Using my training as a high school business teacher with a trained eye as a proofreader and with my institutional knowledge of zoning in this town gleaned over the last forty-six years, my presentation to you will include some technical corrections, some rewording suggestions, and some outright objections to items proposed to be deleted. I'm going to give you my comments now instead of at the end of my presentation, so you can follow along and make some comments on each, as such as, I agree with what she says, or this needs further research, or whatever other comment you wish to make about what I am about to present to you. And I'm going to pass these out right now. I have a copy for everyone, including our new alternates, who I understand and believe that they can participate in any discussion up until voting, but they cannot vote on the final application.
Well, if they can vote, if one of them is.
Well, if they're seated, but if they're not seated, they can, they can. So I have to wait till he gives that out to everybody, everybody, Mr. There's nine copies there.
Unless you, unless you give them to your handsome, handsome Asian girl, helping to talk.
So if you have your pens and pencils ready, I want to show you, I'm going to tell you how to read my paper. I have, if you see the first R and then a number, that is the recommended amendment. And that one talks, specifically in that recommendation, I want to talk about fifteen point ten point one, which is minor changes in C. The end of the sentence should read, "A major change should not be approved by the zoning enforcement officer and shall be referred to the commission." There's some little grammatical mistakes in that one. Next is recommendation number eleven, which has to do with parking lots, stormwater drainage. Item number four, section, where it says section three point one six, comma, three point two six. It should read three point two six dash three two six, three point two six, to clearly indicate that the whole section is to be complied with, not just two sections. I find all of the proposed new section four point two three to be awkwardly written, confusing, and much too long to be one sentence. Therefore, I suggest it be rewritten. I question also if there is an error at the end of the sentence where it says, "Commissioner, Commissioner of Public Health and the affected water company." Is the word commissioner correct, or should it be commission? If commissioner is correct, to which commissioner does it refer? Regulation amendment number fourteen, concerning telecommunications and towers. Existing regulation twelve point one one says, "The proposed new amendment leaves out several items from the current regulations, namely, a requirement to fly a balloon representative of the proposed, which represents the proposed height of a tower, provisions if an antenna is installed on a structure other than a tower, a fencing requirement, and what happens if a tower is abandoned." I do not, I do not have time to investigate the state statute to determine whether or not these items are included in the state statute. If they are, that's fine and dandy. If not, I suggest the town contact our state representatives to have them included if these items are important to the town, and I think they should be, and hopefully you agree. Recommendation number sixteen, Architectural Review Board, section seventeen point one. I strongly object to the proposed elimination of seventeen point one point three D, which requires the architectural, architectural A D R B to review the accessory dwelling units. A D Us would be permanent structures once they are built and as such should comply with the aesthetics of and be compatible with existing structures as well as the neighborhood's character. Applicants benefit by the expert review and advice of the highly qualified members of the board, resulting in a much better outcome if the applicant agrees to these suggestions. Indeed, many have been grateful for such a review. Recommendation seventeen, concerning undersized lots, section eleven point two. For eleven point two A two, I suggest the words "it is" be inserted in the following sentence. For all uses other than single-family residential, all lots, all lot standards of the zone in which it is included, is located, shall apply. Turning the page now to recommendation number eighteen, concerning consolidated uses. I am not a fan of consolidating uses as proposed. To me, they are fine as where they are. Doing so seems to add a lot of uses to zones where they are not currently allowed. This could have some unexpected consequences in the future. R nineteen dash R E, expand the range of permitted uses in commercial and industrial zones. I think this also could result in some unintended consequences. Also, knowing our town, some of the proposed uses do not even make sense to me in this new, in the new zones, in the new regs, I think that should say. Recommendation twenty-one, concerning mixed use residential and P V five zones. Changing the dwelling unit density per acre from one thousand square feet required to six hundred square feet and changing the share of residential percentage from sixty-six percent to eighty percent and reduce the minimum ratio of commercial uses from thirty-three percent to twenty percent will result in another win development situation in our town. Residents were soundly out, not in favor of that development proposed for Cogswell Street in Pawtucket some years back. Some of you may remember that. In addition, keep in mind that residential units in most instances need parking, as parking is extremely limited in downtown Pawtucket, which where most of P V five is. I do not think this is a very good thing to add to our regulations. Recommendation twenty-four, ground mounted solar energy. I think an example should be added to this amendment to better explain what the following sentence means. Systems located over newly constructed parking areas should be exempted up to the amount of the area conventure with the off-street parking required by these regulations. I found that a little difficult to understand, and I think the example could be very helpful. Recommendation twenty-six, concerning accessory dwelling units. Here's a question for you. Does the Planning and Zoning Commission still get to review the application with proposed switch from a special use permit, S U P, to a site plan application? Recommendation thirty, updating buffer areas and screening. The comparison charts for the commercial districts in the summer report for the proposed changes reflect what our consultant said many times in the online virtual sessions that our current regulations are too restrictive. In most cases, the buffer requirements in his proposal have been reduced. I do not agree. For example, I object to the reduction in buffer area in open space developments from forty feet to twenty feet. I object to the reduction for residence duplexes from, whoops, I forgot to put how many feet to fifteen feet. In general, all reductions are way too lenient and should not be reduced from current regulations. Again. from current regulations. Again, Recommendation 30 concerning 5.3.2, the attached housing area. The proposal to add a new F and delete the original F is a huge mistake. The existing F, which reads "requirement, required," "in order to promote good design of projects and to provide open spaces consistent with the regulation requirements, any requirements for buffers, integral lot areas, designed open space and common recreation spaces, floor area, neighborhood area, parking requirements in non-infringement areas, are to be shown in separate identifiable locations on site plans, and the areas required are not to be counted or treated for any of the other areas specified in this section." I was here when these attached regulations were first introduced without item F. It was necessary to add this element to the regulations because developers were submitting plans with what I called "double dipping." In other words, they were trying to use one area to meet two requirements. Leaving the current F in our new regulations will make it very clear that double dipping is prohibited. Regulation 33, concerning the update of sign regulations. When you're looking at Chart 14.5.1B, the superscript in the chart, number five, doesn't make sense because it refers to 14.7.8, which relates to projecting wall signs when it is on the line for sandwich boards. I also question why sandwich board signs are allowed in residential areas. It seems most inappropriate. Also, 14.7.3D5A is awkwardly written. Please rewrite it. Two, for an entrance sign designated only the name of the development, the sign shall not exceed 50 square feet in area and 12 feet in height. Continuing on, just two more. Recommendation 34, concerning expanding outdoor lighting. One item from the existing regulations seems to be admitted, omitted, and that is this. Quote, "The maximum height of the light source shall be 20 feet as measured from the ground." If this is not explicitly stated in the regulations, we could have another situation like what happened at the Pawtucket Post Office, where the light pole was placed on top of cement bases, making the light source even higher than the 20 feet. Please add back that sentence. Regarding Recommendations 35A and 35B, replacing the FAR with lot coverage limits, I am not in favor of changing what is in our existing regulations. I feel the FAR has served us well over the years, and the potential impacts of this, adopting this, to me, are too great. Why would you knowingly adopt regulations that would restrict the amount of parking and make some commercial properties non-conforming? This is not a good thing. Please drop 3A, 35A, and 35B. Finally, I have commented on many of the 37 items before you tonight. I support those items which I have not mentioned, and I am very glad to read that our consultant will be responsible for updating the existing regulations with the suggested amendments that you, after careful consideration, decide to adopt. Thank you for your time and your attention to this very important update to our zoning regulations.
Thank you, Carleen. I should note that the detailed comments that you provided in Phase 1 were very helpful in finalizing the Phase 1 documents. We do appreciate your detailed approach to the review. Next person is David Rappin, our former chairman. Good evening, David.
David Rappin, 211 Cold Grove, Francisco. I'm a little disappointed. I think we could have done more in zone changes. The town planner came out in favor of some zone changes. I think they even kept it. We did, we only changed one little street. I think that we're wasting too much land. There are areas in town that has water and sewer, and we're still asking to be two acres, three acres zoning. And this is all south of 95. You know, this is the area where we have to, where we can build. North of 95, it's rural. It's the far part of the town. I think we should really look at it. Look at the zones and see. Maybe you should go back and look that over, because I think it needs some changes. I'd be glad to help you with my opinion of this. Couple things. On the applications and approval, this first thing you said about 19 years... Is that retroactive? Retroactive to any applications that are in the works now?
No.
So it's only for new applications?
Correct. The regulations that are in effect or an application is filed are regulations that follow the application through the entire process. All the amendments are there.
So the old ones, they got to come back in the old timeframe? They don't get an extension? And I'll tell you the story of Big Y. A number one, Big Y. The AMP wanted to be built. I was on head of the Inland Wetlands Commission. And there was a big tree. And we said, "Don't take that down. That's in the Inland Wetlands buffer." Well, they took the damn thing down, of course. So we said, "All right. Now plant some trees in the same total circumference of these, of that big tree you took down." "We made the tree." "Oh, sure." They planted it. And they planted all the planting in the parking lot of Big Y. That's when the AMP owned it. So Big Y comes and cuts them all down. So how do we enforce these landscaping in the parking lot? I have no idea. It's not up to the zoning enforcement officer to go around every week and check to see if the trees are there. But I'm not quite sure. There must be some way we can find them or do something. Some way to protect it. We ask, anywhere around town, you ask the landscaper in the parking lot, "Do you run around and see where it is today?" Half of it mowed over, half of it run over, and the other part disappeared. So I really think you should look that over. There was one more item I had in mind, but mainly those are the three things. I just think you've got to look at those zones. And I think that we can help out a lot of things in the years to come. You know, I'm not going to be around, but I think that in the future that we need to... Don't tie up that land from one house to three, four acres, three acres. Not needed anymore. It was not done, not done right in the beginning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Dave. On the zones, I might agree with you. I think we're waiting for the POCD work to come back from your group and the good work that you're doing. That's really when that takes place.
But then we're going to have some change then? Can we do that, you think?
That's the most appropriate, that's the most appropriate time to do that, yes. With the POCD updated.
Okay, we'll work on that.
Thank you, David. Don Sadowski.
Evening, sir.
All right. Do I turn the signal on or shut off?
There's a button, there's a button on there.
Yeah, Don Sadowski, both for Pawtucket. Number 36, I agree with that. Some of these other comments that I've heard tonight, I wasn't going to say anything, but with what the state's doing with the commissions and stuff like that, especially one in particular issue with parking, I don't think that's a very good deal. You guys should not lose control of that. You should fight back on stuff like that. Where's our representatives? What were they doing? Because Mystic is tough to park. Like Carleen said, Pawtucket will be a carbon copy. Westley built parking lots. Pawtucket has it. Where are you going to get the land to do that? Who pays for it? Okay? The other thing that I haven't noticed in the zoning regulations is the map of the aquifer in Pawtucket. Where is it? It's not in the book. It's in the Mystic, Mystic is, but it's part of the regulations. The aquifer map for Pawtucket is not there. You've got to go look elsewhere for it. That's a sensitive area, Route 2. Okay? And you should know where the aquifer is. You should protect the aquifer. You should not reduce the zone. Okay? Don't overbuild our water supply. Okay? Mystic, you guys are starting to have problems. That doesn't mean that we should get it too. The other thing I wish you guys would do is this is a town of Stonington, not the city of Stonington. So hopefully you'll keep this a town. And that's about it, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
Fred, you wish to speak a first time? Then we'll, then we'll have anybody that wishes to speak a second time, Dave. You're all set. Dave, did you have additional comments?
Anything I came here tonight is that on Inland Wetlands, I think it's up to the Inland Wetlands Commission to regulate the buffers. I don't think it's a zoning matter. I think it's the Inland Wetlands matter. As you know, I was head of that too. And we, even in Inland Wetlands, there is no defined buffer. It could be 10 feet. It could be 50 feet. It could be 100 feet. It could be 500 feet. And I don't... But you're taking that away from the Inland Wetlands Commission, and I think that should be taken out of zoning and sent back to Inland Wetlands. You know, and as Chuck said tonight, we're probably doing it, and it's probably not going to have any power at all. But I think it should be taken out of the zoning regulation. Just let them handle it, and they'll get the recommendations to the zoning board. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to make any comment, either for or against or a general comment on these? Anyone who hasn't signed up, you're free to speak at this time?
I just wanted to make a follow-up comment on Mr. Raffin's comment about the Inland Wetlands Commission. They did submit a letter stating that they feel that their jurisdiction controlling the 100-foot upland review area was being, is removed from them in the JB130 zone with this non-infringement, and they'd like it removed. I know at one time, at least 10 years ago, the Planning and Zoning Commission had submitted a request to the Wetlands to opine on whether or not they felt that the non-infringement should be removed. And at that time, the Inland Wetlands Commission had no problem with it because they felt two people, two commissions looking at it was fine. But the present commission does not feel that way, and they did submit a letter. I've not seen it in the file here, but it was forwarded to Francisco, who I think has his opinion on it.
When Wetlands was first adopted back in the '70s, there was a question whether Wetlands had any authority outside of designated Wetlands lines. And that's why a lot of towns put the upland review requirements in zoning regulations. That was subsequently, you know, felt that, that because it would be so easy to have a violation occur in an upland review area and have it spill into the Wetlands, that it more properly belonged in Wetlands. And I think initially, some towns made some mistakes and put it with the zoning commission. But I do think that the upland review belongs with Wetlands.
Originally, when the Wetlands was adopted, it was adopted as a buffer, a 50-foot buffer. And too many towns were considering that 50-foot a no-fly zone, and that was never the intent of the Inland Wetlands Commission. So in 2004, it was changed to an upland review area where the golden standard was 100 feet. And this town has 100 feet. Other towns have 102. I mean, they have, you know, depending on the sensitivity of the area, they have various setback requirements.
Correct. They take different approaches, too. Some towns, as you say, look at the upland review area as prohibitive. You know, you cannot do anything in it. And I think our town takes a more reasonable stance on it. Anyone else wish to make a comment?
There's that question.
If you could just speak into the microphone, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I tried to do it before.
There's stuff about cutting down a tree that's 12 inches. I got to come and get permission from you guys to cut a tree down on my property?
I don't know that we adopted a regulatory process, Kenny.
I was just curious.
I got to tell you that when I read that, it was a little taken aback.
Do I need to cut them down?
We'll take another, we'll take another look at that. Okay, if that concludes public comment, is there any other questions from the commission for our expert? Let's just go get rebuttal time on our management items. I'll ask one.
Yeah. So I have a little bit of a concern about the, what is it, 35, going from floor area ratio to lot coverage. Just I'm trying to get my head around the math. Like, I'm not sure what the consequences will be to the town or the unintended consequences. You know, I spent more than 10 years on ZBA, and we spent a lot of time talking about floor area ratio and trying to figure out if this is going to allow bigger houses or smaller houses. I'm not sure the effect that this is going to have on town, on the town. I'm just, just when you, when you... I don't know, Francisco, if you're going to go over these questions, if you can talk about the experience that other towns have had. Seems like a pretty reasonable approach, but I'm just not sure what, how the math works out.
Yeah, I'm having a brief response to that. We have worked with other communities to move them from core area ratio to lot coverage amendments. We did so successfully in the city of Bristol. Those regulations have been in place for all about over a year now. Without, to my knowledge, I continue to work with them, so I'm usually informed of any challenges or issues with the new regulations. To my knowledge, there have not been any issues. I do think that over time I do think that over time, you might find that you need to or should adjust some of those values based upon the types of applications they receive or if you experience any number of properties that are non-conforming due to the new standards. You can revise those up or downwards. The standards that we've provided are based upon your existing floor area ratio and based upon a cursory review G I S analysis of properties. We didn't check out every property in the town or in the zone or whether or not they would conform to the new regulations. We did do a sampling to ensure that we were in the right ballpark for those standards. And it is tied to floor area ratio. I think you can see that relationship between the two. So it's a rational basis. We were careful not to be overly restrictive, meaning not to establish standards that were borderline on the low side, or aiming for the middle, to ensure that most properties, not all or significant percentage of properties were remaining conformity with the new standard.
Francisco, if you could just expand a little bit. To me, the building coverage and impervious area coverage standards are much more prevalent in zoning regulations throughout the state today than floor area ratio, which is, is I think outdated. And much more towns have adopted building coverage and impervious area coverage. In addition, the state's new stormwater regulations have incorporated requirements that deal directly with building coverage and impervious area coverage. And rewriting these will make it much easier to comply with and work with the storm's new, the state's new stormwater regulations as well. But, but I don't know of another, I'm sure there are other towns, but is it, isn't impervious coverage and building coverage much more the standard today?
I think it is. A majority of towns in Connecticut use a combination, one or the other, a combination of building or impervious coverage. Floor area ratio is a far more effective tool in urban areas because the coverage is 100% or very close to. And so the way we're controlling for those areas is really density. So F A R is leaned upon heavily in New York City's zoning regulations for that exact reason because the coverage that you're given, everything is 90 to 100%, and really what you're controlling for is density. And it sounds like Stonington, while I understand that density is a concern, you have a lot of other controls on density, right? You have minimum lot size, they only allow, most of your zones only allow single family or maybe two-family residential. You have many controls on density, and coverage is its own control on density. But you have very, very little control over what someone can do with that property, how much of it they can control within their surface, which is working against your stormwater management objectives. The coverage, high coverage of the property produces the urban effect. You just have a resident, you know, concern about, you know, urban-type development in the town of Stonington. And so the coverage targets exactly that, shows that zimian area of landscape is reserved for focus space, and therefore contributes both aesthetically to the community and helps reduce stormwater runoff and protect water quality.
Again, I think, I think the move to impervious standard and building coverage regulates exactly what floor area ratio regulates. We may have to make adjustments to reduce non-conformities, although we've looked at that. And it will comport much better with the state's stormwater regulations, which now are mandatory on the towns. And it might be very difficult if we stick with floor area ratio. So I'm strongly in favor of adopting the new standards of coverage and building coverage and impervious coverage, which are easier to understand and regulate exactly the same
Anyone else have any questions? Francisco, I should ask, do you wish any rebuttal time on any of the issues that were brought up to make any clarification?
If I could very briefly, I do appreciate the time that you've put into her work and her presentations, her straightforward, easy follow. I would have appreciated it even more a couple of months ago, but here they are today, and she's had the time that she's put into that, so I very much appreciate that. With respect to any grammatical issues, what I recommend is that if you do choose to make a motion receiving or whenever you do that, would make a motion to adopt the regulations with any grammatical improvements as necessary or as identified by Carleen. You know, provided those grammatical changes don't change the tender meaning of regulations as only for the purposes of providing clarity and heterogram within the regulations. And so you can do exactly that. We don't have to start this process over again yet. I do want to respond to a couple items, and I'm trying to keep track of everything. First, on the subject of lighting height, we do maintain a standard, a maximum of 20 feet for the lighting fixtures. That's still in our amended lighting regulations. So I want to take that away as anything certain. So that hopefully addresses that issue. And then with respect to a comment made by another person in their comments, this, your town has one, one state-designated Level A aquifer protection area, and only one, right? It's in the western part of town. You do, you do however have a groundwater protection overlay zone that's applicable to, it covers much of the northern part of the town, including the eastern part of town along Route 2. Those regulations are in place and they were remaining in place. We're doing nothing, we're not making any changes to your groundwater protection overlays on the boundaries. And what we're doing is we're strengthening the aquifer protection area regulations and the connection between those regulations and your zoning regulations. So we're doing nothing to weaken aquifer drinking water protection. We're actually extending them by extending out those protections to Rhode Island's community wellhead area that does extend and cover part of Route 2 and the northeastern part of town. So that's the area that is being referenced to that aquifer, which is a Rhode Island designation, not a Connecticut designation. There was no protections for that area before outside of the groundwater protection overlay zone, and no reference to that wellhead area whatsoever in the existing regulations. We are introducing that reference to those regulations in that groundwater protection area designated by Rhode Island. And that designation, for that reference, that designation just not currently exists.
Thank you, Francisco. Any further questions of Francisco?
Do you have a question?
Please, go ahead.
So regarding recommendation 26, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the architectural design review currently relies on existing architecture to judge compatibility. So if ADUs are built without architectural review and become part of the permanent landscape over time, is it possible for that to broaden or shift sort of the architectural standards that are used for future projects?
Okay. I'm going to try to deconstruct that question because there are a few different elements. First, as it is, the authority that the architectural design review committee has over private development outside of a village district on private property is extremely limited. The only doors we have given by the state outside of the designated village district is advisory, it's guidance, right? You cannot compel an applicant to build something to a certain architectural style or aesthetic outside of the designated and adopted village district. Within the adopted village district, you can only do so for parts of a property or building that are visible from a public street or a public space. So as it is, your authority is limited. While you can certainly depart and go through that process, and your design review board can have other sorts of suggestions and recommendations, and most applicants will comply. You cannot deny an application on the basis of the fact that they did comply with your A D R B's recommendations. And if you do, it's contestable and court, and if it's out, if the property in question is outside of an adopted village district, you're not supported by statutes, which means you're likely to lose that case support. So we need to get, we need to move away from things that you don't have statutory or regulatory. And this is a form of housing that I think we agreed upon our work over the past two years, that this is an important type of housing to support in Stonington. There have been very, very few applications that have come forward, and very few of these units actually built. And the belief was, is one of the reasons why is because it's really almost unapplicable to go through the process with the combined architectural design review and special human requirements that it becomes costly and burdensome, and therefore these projects aren't being built. So ours is basically, you don't eliminate a requirement that these come to the commission. We maintain a site plan application requirement, which means it still comes to the commission and is administratively approved. You still review the application and serve, ensure that the development is appropriately cited, it's compliant with all setbacks, the buffering, screening requirements, that the access of parking is provided. So you still have a larger measure of control. Furthermore, I think, I think it's in the interest of most property owners to design and build and provide an improvement that complements their property and adds value to it. And it's not, you know, it doesn't attract from or look out of place. Now, while that's not true 100% of cases, I think that most applicants want to build something that looks like a lawns and property, complements a property, so that it add values, add values, that it attracts value.
Thank you, Francisco. Does that answer your question?
It does. Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. If there are no further questions or comments from the audience, I think my feeling is that we should leave the public hearing open. It will permit additional comments, you know, from now until our next meeting, and we may have additional parties that wish to comment again on the 16th.
If the chairman doesn't mind, I have a couple of questions.
Oh, please, please.
On recommendation 17, where the very bottom, an unimproved lot that is smaller than the required minimum lot size and is contiguous to another lot under the same ownership must be combined with that lot. We've always had that merger clause, but what I don't understand is such a lot is not eligible for the exemption described in item A above. If the lot is still undersized, why don't they get the same avenue of relief as their neighbor who's also undersized? I mean, they've tried to become more conforming, whether they enforce on them or not, they're still now more conforming with the regs, but they're still undersized. So why is that avenue of relief removed from them?
From the combined lot?
Is that a question? I'll try to respond. Presumably, when combined with adjacent lots, that lot will become conforming.
But all too often, it's not.
The intention, the intention the regulation has is written is to ensure that two non-conforming lots, they could otherwise be combined, combined, conforming, conforming one, if under the same ownership, are instead combined and become conforming instead of taking advantage of an exemption that the lot wise allows each one to be conforming individually instead of having any potential.
I do think we need to take a close look at your suggestion because I don't think we want to, we want to rule out that relief.
Right. And I have one other comment about the 20-foot height for lighting. Yes, that's always been part of the regulations, but I just met with an applicant who is trying to become compliant with dark sky lighting, and they're lighting engineers and they're going with a high-end company. They're, in order to be compliant with dark sky lighting, they're going to have to go as high as 40 feet. Is that part of the engineering for this dark sky lighting?
If I can't speak to their specific application, I can tell you that typically, a lighting designer or an applicant prefers to go with higher fixtures because one fixture can cover a larger area. Right? So you need half as many fixtures as you're twice as tall because they can broadcast over a larger area. However, it's, they tend to result in more lighting footage off the property. You know, they're part of, the lighting source is part more visible when they're up higher. I can't speak to that individual project. I don't know why, why they don't believe they can achieve dark sky compliance with 20-foot high fixtures.
Why don't we take, why don't we take the time that we have to take a look at that and see, see if it makes sense, you know, that we not restrict something if indeed, you know, engineering standards are going to be back for variance on every project we have. So let's take, let's take the opportunity to look at that.
More importantly, we maintain a standard that we currently have, which is a 20-foot limit on fixtures, right? That aspect of it is on.
So what's the commission's feeling on leaving the public hearing open?
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a good idea to leave it open, again, just to give the public more opportunity, feedback. Also, I think there were some comments that probably we want to think of.
Correct.
So if the rest of the commission is in agreement, I would make a motion to continue this public hearing to our next scheduled hearing on the 16th. Or do we want to go a long downrange?
We need to go to the special meeting in January.
Okay, special meeting, okay. To the next, you would schedule a special meeting in January, follow up on this. Okay. I make that motion.
Motion made to continue the public hearing to a date to be determined in January. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Dave. Thank you, Dave. Any discussion on the motion? Candy?
No.
No?
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Do we know, do we know what date that will be? Like, is it always 2nd, 3rd, 4th, or 2nd, 2nd, 3rd?
Come on, Candy.
Unfortunately, I don't have the 2026 calendar in front of me.
Okay. Okay, no further discussion?
26.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair abstains, motion passes. The public hearing is continued. Thank you very much for everybody for attending this evening. My thanks to the commissioners for, again, attending a special meeting on this. We concluded the, motion to adjourn, second is not required, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Meeting is adjourned.